All right, good evening, everyone. It is January 7th, 2019, 6:30 PM. This is a first regular city council meeting of the City Council of Arlington. Mayor Rich Nagel will be presiding at the meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and would you please join in, crosstalk allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we'll have the swearing in of the newly elected council members.
So I would ask that Richard Nagel, Michelle Batch, Jim Highland, please stand up. Raising your right hand, repeat after me. I, your name.
Hi, Jim Highland.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter of the City of Arlington.
And the Charter of the City of Arlington.
And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me.
And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me.
As mayor or city council member of the City of Arlington.
As mayor of the City of Arlington.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations on another term, all three of you. So, I could have you sign. Do any of you want a copy for your records, for your memory book?
No, I have mine.
Okay.
If you have one.
If you have one, I will.
Yep.
All right, at this time, we'll have roll call. Councilmember Hattleston.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batch.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Here.
All councilmembers are present. Also at the table with me and with the other councilmembers, to my left, City Administrator Pat Melvin. To my right, City Attorney Ross Arnison. In the audience this evening is Police Chief John Pedersen. And Kurt Mank, I believe, is here. Just stepped out for a minute, so that is who is in attendance this evening. Approve the agenda and any agenda additions. I believe there are some changes.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Looking at the consent agenda, we do have a number of minutes which are being removed. Item A, approval of the October 17th minutes. Item B, approval of the October 24th special council minutes. Item D, approval of the November 19th regular council minutes. As well as item E, approval of the December 17th regular council minutes. These are being removed because, as you know, we've been dealing with some staffing challenges. The individual who is working on these minutes is having to do so on weekends, and that doesn't always work out because of different things. So, we will work on getting those minutes caught up to date. We just had a staff member in the Administration Department who came back to work today, who had been out on leave. So, my hope is that we're going to get caught up with some of this work, which has been backlogged a little bit. So, thank you for your patience with that. Also, on your agenda, I have highlighted item 5H, which is approval of a gambling permit for Sibley County Agricultural Association raffle. That was not included on the initial agenda, but was included in your packet. So, that information is out there. Going down to seven announcements. Item D was not on the original agenda, but was included in the packet. An open house on the 2019 Street and Utility Improvements is being scheduled for Tuesday, January 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Community Center. Then moving on to the back page of your agenda. Item 11F, correction was made there. Resolution approving extension of the Arlington Sewer Access Connection Fee and Water Access Connection Fee waiver program. Previously, and on agendas that were posted, it made reference to creating the sewer and water access connection fee waiver. But what we are doing is just simply extending it into 2019. And then the last correction made to the agenda is item 16, which is approved deny city waste collection contract to Renville Sibley Sanitation LLC. Those are the changes for the January 7th council meeting agenda.
Anyone else have any changes? If not, motion is in order to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Batch, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda, and they would, there are four items now, so just for clarification here. Item A, approval of the November 5th regular council minutes. Item B is approval of the bills. Item C, approval of Roberta Zaski as Training Safety Officer for Fire Department, retroactive to January 1st. And lastly, item D, approval of the gambling permit for Sibley County Agricultural Association raffle on August 4th.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Cowell, to approve the consent agenda with the deletions that were earlier mentioned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Addressing the council, is there anyone? I don't think anyone that isn't on the agenda. Item 7, announcements.
First item is that the city offices will be closed on Monday, January 21st, in observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. Because that typically would be a day when we have a council meeting in the evening. The council meeting has been delayed until Tuesday, January 22nd, at 6:30. Second announcement is the League of Minnesota Cities Experienced Officials 2019 Leadership Conference, February 1st through the 2nd in Plymouth, or February 22nd through the 23rd in Brainerd. We do have several councilmembers that are attending, and we have made registration and are, I believe, either finalizing or have finished lining up lodging as well. So, if anybody else wishes to attend, please let me know, and we will get you signed up as soon as we can. Third item is the Knights of Columbus Fish Boil, which is scheduled for Friday, January 18th, from 4:30 to 8 o'clock here at the Community Center. As you may recall, we had some challenges at previous year because of what we believe might have been some fish juice that may have spilled in the cooler. The Knights of Columbus have agreed that they will put some plastic down and try and prevent what happened last year from happening. So, we're hopeful that that will allow us to have that fish smell for a few days, but not for a few months. The last item, which was added to the agenda, is that we will have an open house on the 2019 Street and Utility Improvement Project on Tuesday, January 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00 here at the Community Center. So, we will have that evening. We will also have at 6:30 our regular council meeting.
Okay, any questions on the announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications.
Councilmembers, just wanted to update you. Included in the packet was the November Water Waste Water Report. Looking at the information that was provided. People Services, People Service has been working on a variety of different issues, one of which is they've been having some challenges lately with furnaces in the water treatment plant. But I believe that Lee has worked with, they've been switching on and off due to some high levels that have been coming from Northland Dry. Lee has worked with that and talked with Northland Dry, so I think they've overcome that situation. Also, they've been looking at some lighting replacement out there because it was getting a little dark. They have moved to LED lights, and they are in the process of changing out some of those lights, which I believe will do a better job of providing security around the facility. But also, since we've got some police department vehicles and different things out there, it will overall be a better move. And then if you take a look, you can see the average daily water that is pumped, comparing 2018 with 2017, as well as looking at the average daily wastewater pumped, comparing 2018 to 2017. So, looking at that, it appears that our average daily wastewater pumped is up slightly in 2018 compared to 2017. So, are there any questions?
We always get more back than we give out.
Yeah.
As long as we're getting close to June.
I see a couple of months looks pretty close, so.
Closing the gap a little bit, huh?
Slowly.
And the League of Minnesota Cities dividend, did you mention that?
Nope. The next item, councilmembers, we're very fortunate that we're able to participate in the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. Somewhat similar to an insurance company, but different. Basically, the money that we pay towards premiums goes in, and then at the end of the year, the insurance trust takes a look at their expenses and comes back and will return money. If we were in any other type of insurance agreement, there would not be money coming back to us. It would be money that would stay and be considered profit of the insurance company. Because we are part owners and invest in the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, at the end of the year, that money comes back to the city as a pro-rata amount based on what we've paid in. So, I'm happy and pleased to notify you that we have received a dividend in the amount of $4,308. And there's some information on that back page that gives you kind of an idea of where the City of Arlington is with regards to the premiums that we've paid and how much we have received in dividends historically. So, we are doing what we can to reduce claims. And I think we're doing a good job. If you look at the first chart there, it shows that our numbers were a little bit higher in '16, but over '17 and '18, those numbers have come down in terms of what we're having to pay out in premiums, which is a reflection of our claims.
And what type of insurance are we talking about here? The property?
We're talking about property. We're talking about liability as well as.
Worker, okay. No workers' comp, though, is it?
Ah, no, this is not included.
So, liability, auto, and property?
Yes.
Okay, any questions on that?
Certainly isn't cheap, is it?
No, it isn't. All right, we'll move along to reports of officers, boards, committees. And the first item is administrative review of 2018 city council goals, discussion about setting the 2019 goals.
Councilmembers, you may wonder why this topic has come up in this early on the agenda and in this category. One of the reasons was that in talking with the mayor, we felt that sometimes when we put these issues on the end of the agenda in an effort to kind of move on, we don't maybe talk as much as we otherwise would. So, I'm providing for you an opportunity to kind of weigh in and talk a little bit about what our 2018 goals were, but also to talk a little bit about what you want to see the process be for developing our 2019 goals. So, I'm banding out.
Yep.
So I would just open it up to having some discussion about anything you want to talk about regarding our 2018 goals and what you think would be a good process for developing our goals for 2019. One of the things that I'm in the process of scheduling is a meeting between the city council, the EDA, as well as the planning committee, to talk about our goals and how those two committees in particular can work to advance goals that the city has for development and business retention. So.
So I know if we want to formulate some goals ahead of time, ahead of that meeting with the EDA and planning and zoning, or if we want to use input from that meeting to come back and put together our goals. Because at least we'd find out then what they feel is important to the, those groups would be important to them.
And I think for that, we should have that, all that stuff we did last year from the strategic planning. I mean, those are still, should be ongoing goals. So, I would think a lot of that would be still the same if it wasn't done.
I think with that meeting, those groups are probably looking at, for direction from us.
Maybe they are, yeah.
So, I would, I would imagine, my idea would be to get together during a workshop or something, and just having a goal-setting workshop with the council. Bring up the strategic plan like you mentioned, Adam, and the sheet with all of our past goals on it as well. Maybe dig a little deeper.
And again, we don't need 12 goals. I mean, we, I would just assume see five, six of them that we can probably attain, know that we can get those accomplished in 2019.
Okay, the water park is off my agenda.
Water park is off the agenda. You've been trying for that for about three years, four years now, four.
Going on five.
Going on five, yeah.
I just need a couple more. Well, just looking on the 2018 goals, I think several of those were accomplished or at least addressed and talked about. And I think some we moved on with and some were kind of put on the back burner and some were put in the garbage can.
Yeah, some are, you know, like the first one, acquire access to the South Industrial Park. I think we've pretty much given up on that, at least for the near future. I think there's some other alternatives that, I know EDA would like us to pursue, and I think council would look at pursuing also instead of that. But housing study, you know, that's been taken care of. So, this would be a good place to start, just to see what is worthy of continuing on in 2019, what's been accomplished in 2018, and then maybe add some other ideas to it.
Was the phone system ever upgraded?
It was not included in the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
It was brought up, but it was not, we did not have funds.
Had a technology service provider to get close on that?
We're close, and we've been close for quite a few months, but we will get that done in January.
Do we have enough quality telephones to make the system work here for you?
You know what? We, until something breaks, we're doing okay. So, we, because of the age of the phones, it's becoming more and more difficult to get the.
Like the streetlights?
Yes, yeah, somewhat similar to that. So, that's why we do have it still on the capital.
So, that should go to the top of the list for next year?
It should be, yeah. We, when I came in 2017, it was on the list to be done that year in 2018. So, if we don't do it in 2019, yeah, it should certainly be done in 2020.
I think getting a new IT provider that'll help you in that search because it'll be VoIP is what it'll be instead of the regular copper home line.
Which with it will bring some savings in terms of telephone costs.
So, do we know what kind of a price tag that upgrading of the telephone system carries with it, roughly?
I believe we have maybe $10,000 or $15,000 in CIP, but that number is just a guess. We don't know what that number will be until we get somebody and we figure out the model that we want. It may be less than that.
The only reason I'm saying that is because our 800 megahertz bids came in significantly lower than what we had intended, and there'd be some savings there. Maybe it'd be, you know, partway through the year again to take a look at what kind of funds are available. And maybe savings like that can help us fund some of these things that are in need.
I know what's, what's, what we did at school is we invited Frontier Inn to throw a bid together for us for the VoIP phones and such. And I think they did package deals type, so.
Frontier?
Yeah.
Okay.
They sell the VoIP phones. That's, I think, who we bought them through. But there's other companies that bid for them too, or gave us a presentation, so we seen what they had to offer.
Okay.
We just switched over to MediaCom on the.
Our internet services through MediaCom, isn't it? The office here?
Oh, a while back.
A while back, right, yeah.
Is that phone and internet?
I believe so, yes. Yeah.
And with a new system, not only tie in City Hall, but the police department and public works?
Correct. It would, it would be for all city offices that would be getting the phones because we all have the same age equipment. So, it would be a package deal, yeah.
Well, what are the thoughts of the councilmembers? Have a workshop to just sort of come up with some goals? When would be? We can't do it before the next council meeting because that's, that open house. 22nd, so it'd have to be a separate night, a separate evening, late afternoon, evening?
Would that be in Orlando or?
Send you off to.
I like the way you think.
We'll send you off to Orlando, and then the rest of us will.
Thought we were having a wake of the woods or something.
And I think what, what we would then try and do is we try, do we want to have the council goals put together prior to having the workshop with the EDA and the planning committee? Or do you want to invite them to give input, and then you use maybe some of their ideas? If they come across with some good ideas, maybe that's something that you wish to incorporate into a council goal. Which comes first?
Could we try to do maybe like the same night? Like do the council at 6:00 and the rest at 7:00 or something?
That'd be enough time to get everything together?
Yeah, get it together and taped up and everything, you know, for sharing.
Yeah, I guess my thought is to do the council first and then the joint.
But isn't, isn't all the other committees? Outline as to some ideas. Don't all, don't the other committees feed to this council?
They do, yes.
And so, wouldn't it be logical that they meet first and throw ideas together?
Well, we already had our planning and zoning meeting for the year, but EDA's coming up next week. I mean, we could ask them if they had any input. Could throw it out to Cynthia to see. She wanted to contact the members if they had any goals. We didn't discuss goals.
Well, I think they're, they're pretty much dealing with the rental.
Yep.
That's their big thing for the year. So, I think we can, we can assume that that's going to come our way in a few months. I think we could put that on as a goal without, you know, that would be. I don't know of anything else that they have, that they're working on. Yeah, it'd be nice coming to a workshop with some kind of, you know, some ideas, 10 of them, and let's narrow it down to six or whatever. We can probably get a good start by looking at last year's, which ones are still worth considering or haven't been accomplished.
How about if councilmembers want to send me an email with suggested goals for 2019? I will include that along with the goals that we came up with from our strategic session, planning session, and send that out to you, and you can kind of weigh in on those and let me know what your top couple of choices are, and we'll bring those forward for further discussion.
Oh, work.
Within the group.
So, when would you like to have that input from the council? No later than, what kind of date are we talking?
No later than the 20, or should we go the 17th? And then we can even have some, just some preliminary discussion at the meeting on the 22nd?
I can't see that calendar.
Thursday, the 17th?
Sure.
Yeah, don't give us too much time, you know what happens then.
That's right.
And then we'll have that topic on the council agenda for the 22nd.
You'll be emailing?
Yes, yep, I'll send that out.
So then, when are we thinking of possibly scheduling a meeting with the EDA and planning and zoning?
I will push that out.
Okay, okay.
At least on that.
All right. I guess with, you know, with the explanation that the council felt it important to work on their goals first.
Yeah.
So, we need a little more time.
And I will send an email to both Cynthia and Amy saying if you have any goals that you know are going to be top priorities for your committee, please let us know. That can be. That can be considered as you're looking at your goals.
Yep. Okay, anything else on that subject? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to Maintenance Department update, Kirby. Welcome. Happy New Year.
Thank you, you guys too. I guess a topic would be, uh, last four to six weeks, Mike and I have been on some snow patrol, uh, we had, I think me and Mike have been out six times, blowable snows, or we had to call the trucks in, Miller's trucks, um, so that's, knock on wood, been a relatively decent winter for that. Uh, the new truck, plow truck works great, uh, no problems there, um, got our Christmas lights down, um, skating rink is going, um, we put approximately fifty-five hundred gallons, I finally kept track this time, we got our new water trailer, five hundred gallon water trailer from our DNR grant for the watering trees, so we used that to flood the rink, and it works wonderful, uh, but it took fifty-five hundred gallons to get enough ice on to make it skateable, so I thought that was, I was amazed by that. Uh, street lighting stuff, I, I know Pat's, you know, me and Pat have both kinda gotten the ball rolling on, on that issue, um, I contacted MVC and Excel and asked what they put in municipalities, and they use the same brand that, that we have bought to put on stock, to use the LED heads, uh, that's the American, it's called AEL, American Electric Lighting, um, so seems like that's probably a pretty trusted brand now, if, if Excel and, Excel exclusively uses them, and MVC told me that's mainly what they use, so, uh, that goes for acorn lights, residential lights, and then the ones we put along the highway and probably a few on County Road seventeen, some bigger brighter ones, uh, so at least we're on the right track, I guess, in my mind on, on the product, and also, uh.
Kirby, if I could just add to that, uh, I, I did send a copy of the lights that Kirby has proposed purchasing over to, uh, uh, Kim, who works with us on rebates and different things, and she's gonna be taking a look at whether or not we qualify for any rebates based on the new lights that we're proposing, so that might be an extra source of.
Awesome.
Some funds to help.
Wonderful.
With that cost, so.
And, uh, just in searching too on the internet, I found a, uh, electrical distributor in the cities called, company's called Erby, um, and, uh, so I'm kinda in the works on getting pricing for lights, those particular lights we're looking for, at least, it's a start for pricing anyways, what, what we're actually looking at, um, and then I, I know Excel, uh, in a few cities that I've contacted, Excel has done the whole thing, the install and everything, I guess I didn't ask about loans, but I know we're getting our loan through MVC, I wonder if they also contract, contract the work too, would they actually do the install as well, knock that out all in one, or, that's just a thought, I don't know, um.
So you, are you gonna get it, put it out for bids, is that what you're sort of working towards, putting it out for bids?
Yeah, the work, right, right, and then, but we, we actually buy the lights, I guess that's how I understood it.
We were gonna put all of it, put purchase of the lights as well as installation of
As installation.
Oh, okay.
Into an RFP, which I did.
Gotcha.
Obtain a copy of, uh, I think it was Thief River Falls, somebody, I did obtain a copy of a recent RFP which we will modify and, you know.
Okay.
Customized, uh, City of Arlington.
Okay, I didn't realize that that's all included, all right.
But to, to check with MVC is a good idea.
Okay.
Give them a heads up.
Yeah, 'cause maybe we find if we break them up, maybe, you know, maybe there isn't a great deal by having one company do it all, maybe purchase from one and then you have another install, I don't know.
Is Minnesota Valley Electric aware that we will be applying for that loan?
Yep, yep, I've been in, in contact and, uh, with Joe Green there and he's aware that we're interested in it and knows kind of what, what money we're, we're planning to spend on lights, so, yep, we actually benefited by waiting because now we can qualify for a, a higher amount, initially it was a fifty-fifty match, now they're looking at for two thousand nineteen, a seventy-five, twenty-five, so.
And still ten years interest free?
Correct.
Could we wait till next year and get a hundred?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
It's logical, yeah.
Okay, well, moving on from that, um, uh, the DNR tree grant stuff, all that paperwork is finally, uh, satisfied for the DNR, um, and they came back with a total reimbursement for us of ten thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents, however, she said, uh, that we have four thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars yet in in-kind match, requirements. I'm not totally clear on what that all exactly intend, means, I guess.
Well, I wonder, there could be the volunteer hours that were put in with, I don't know if this tree inventory thing counts towards that, or the, the planting definitely would, you know, the planting.
Her emails suggested it was everything, all the expenses.
Everything, yeah.
So I was gonna, I just haven't had a chance to get back to her in the last couple of weeks, I need to get back to her on clarifying that, I guess.
Yeah, I know.
And then I can talk with Pat too and.
Okay.
Make sure that we're doing the right thing on that, um, but everything else is, is going really well with that, we should be able to wrap that up with no problem next spring with our next planting and, and be done with it, um.
So you have bearwood trees ordered again for next spring?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
I'm waiting to know exactly our amount that we.
Okay.
We have left to spend. Yeah, no, other than that, maintenance as usual, keeping up with buildings and equipment, had a little slower time to be able to maintenance some of our, our, our equipment in the shop, get some fluids changed out, and just do a lot of minor things that we've been waiting to get out, so it's nice to have a little breathing room to, to get a lot of that stuff tackled as of late, uh, I've been out some days, I was at Leading Sibley last Thursday, I've been out sick a couple of days, my kids have been sick, it seems, for six months, so if you're wondering where my face has been, some of that time has been at home, so, uh, yeah, that's all.
How often, how often do you check into the TSE building, just to make sure everything is working?
I'd say, Mike's really good at that, he's, he's my main man on checking that out, he's in there a cou- probably a couple of times a week.
Okay.
Monday and Friday.
Okay.
You know, make sure things over the weekend are okay and then before the weekend, so, especially when it's really cold, maybe every day, he's been in, you know.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We've been communicating well on that and.
Good.
Keeping an eye on it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chris was asking when the Christmas decorations would be coming down over, over the weekend, and she called me today and said they're taking the decorations down.
Yeah, I figured there was, yeah, some question there, Wednesday, well, we came back to work Wednesday, yeah, normally, so when normally we take them down after New Year's, um, I had texted Pat, told him it's gonna be negative six out Wednesday morning, our hydraulics on our truck don't work well, and we gotta get out at six in order to get the wreaths down, and, uh, it's a six-hour project, and I, I don't like using our truck, our bucket truck, when it's that cold, plus our skin will freeze, so, uh, I told him we'll do it Thursday, when I told him that, I realized I had Leading Sibley Thursday, that's an all-day thing, um, and then Friday I was out with a sick kid, so this Monday we.
That's good.
We tackled it, so.
And the weather is milder too than six, six bowls.
Yeah, I had a better day for it, so.
Yeah, helped to wait.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Kirby? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Keep up the good work, appreciate it. All right, we will move into a plethora of resolutions here, being the first meeting of the year, there's a lot of things to take care of, so, first one being Resolution one dash twenty nineteen, resolution, uh, appointing city administrator and authorizing City of Arlington to enter into a contract with Patrick Melvin.
I'll move to, uh, review, oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, approve Resolution one two thousand nineteen, a resolution, appointing city administrator and authorizing the city filing to enter into a contract with Patrick Melvin.
I'll second that.
Okay, Resolution one dash twenty nineteen was introduced by Councilmember Yashewski, Hattlestead, and that is a resolution of appointing city administrator and authorizing the City of Arlington to enter into a contract with Patrick Melvin, and again, the salary amount will be dependent on, uh, the, uh, next meeting, we'll have evaluations and we'll set the salary at that time for Mr. Melvin, if this passes, I mean, it might get voted down.
I was just gonna say.
Blue zone there.
Thank you.
In, in the, in the contract, it, it talks about twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, the, the salary, so it doesn't have, and, I don't know, it, the date, when it's first dated, the beginning of your contract is still in there, so that would be the same, or does that get up, updated to?
This would have to be updated, wouldn't it, to?
So, I, I mean.
Put current dates in, because at the beginning it says October second, twenty seventeen, I mean, that date's gonna be immaterial after.
Well, I think it's ongoing, in there it says that each year, uh, it will be considered along with the schedule of other employees in terms of, uh, uh, pay increase, so, um, I guess, I'd look, I could certainly talk with Ross and find out, does the contract have to be updated each year, or by way of a resolution, can we just extend it each year going forward without having to go back and redo a whole new contract? I can work with Ross and, and get you an answer.
Right, yeah, because I, I mean, in here, I mean, we're, we're talking different dates, um, you know, and then.
Sure.
Underneath number one, it talks about, um, um. Well, that's when you first started.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and, I mean, if that stays the same, then I guess I don't have a problem, but it talks about your salary and it's only talking about twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, doesn't talk about twenty nineteen at all, so.
Correct, that's what we would be setting after his evaluation.
Okay.
So that's the part that would need to be.
Okay. So I guess with that regard, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I don't feel like I can vote yes on this when it's not correct, I'd like to table it, but I know there's already a motion on the, until it's updated, I guess is my thought.
Well, I think the updating will take place, it's just basically the terms of the contract, aside from salary, which is to be determined, the terms are gonna be the same as when Pat was hired, so nothing would change in that, it would just be an ongoing type thing, but I agree, it may need a little cleaning up.
Uh, yeah, my recollection is that, uh, we didn't redo the contracts with past administrators, we just did a, an update extension. Uh, and we didn't redo the whole thing.
Mm-hmm, that's, yeah, I don't remember.
Part, part of the contract says the, uh, uh, the city administrator shall be subject to a performance evaluation by the end of December and annually at the end of each calendar year, um, which I think kind of plays into the fact that each year it's going to be changing and it's kind of recognized in the original contract that there will be changes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the next second sentence, future salary increases will be granted at the title of performance evaluations. And city council.
And, and, but I mean, and if you read into it, it also says by the end of December that we'll have his evaluation done, so then by the time we get to the contract, everything's, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, which they are not right now, that, I mean, I, I'm not trying to push it, your contract's still valid.
Yep.
You know, even if we push this out until things are plugged in there, that should be in there, unless I'm overthinking it, Ross.
I mean, this doesn't really have an end date though either, I mean, if we approve this, it's not like we're approving, oh, it does say one year.
It's one year.
Yeah, again, my, my recollection is we did something in writing, I think it was in the form of an extension, you know, basically saying, uh, you know, here's what's changed, anything that amended herein remains the same from the original contract, I think that's all it does. The alternative is we could, you know, do a new one every year, it wouldn't be that much work, uh, since we have it on computers.
So, I'm, so just an amendment to this is, is, um, instead of doing the resolution? Is that what?
Resolution's been introduced at this point, so we would have to, uh.
Well, you know, one thing, I suppose you could, uh, suggest an amendment to the motion stating that sort of entering into a contract would be, uh, extending the contract to the city administrator, because that's actually what we're doing.
I would just like to be able to update your salary and put it in black and white for you.
Mm-hmm.
And make sure, 'cause it, I mean, I, I don't know if it's changing or not, but if it's changing and increasing, I'm sure you'd like to see that, the increase in there as well, um, and that sort of thing, I don't think too much else would change, other than the dates and how, you know, the pay, so.
What does the council wanna do, we've got a resolution that's been introduced?
I'm fine with the resolution that's been introduced.
Okay, let's go with it, and if it fails, it fails, and then we'll take other action to, uh, change the process a little bit here, okay, uh, Councilmember Yashewski introduced Resolution one dash twenty nineteen, it was second by Councilmember Hattlestead, and again, that is to authorize the city administrator position, uh, Patrick Melvin for the year twenty nineteen, at this time, a vote by roll call, Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yep.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Yes.
All right.
Well, that was easy.
All members voted in favor, none against, the resolution is adopted.
Well, and can we have discussion on how to maybe change that or?
Well, I thi- yeah, I think it's obvious that, that if, if it need, if some dates need to be, I don't, you know.
Yeah, but I mean.
We can work on that and then just have a, a blank line for the salary.
Yeah, exactly.
And then that, that can be resolved at.
Sure.
At a later date.
Yep. I think everyone at this table knows what the process is going to be, and that is that dollar amount will be plugged in once it's been determined, and it'll just be part of the resolution at that time.
And in the future too, I mean, we will be much more, uh, alert to the fact that there are deadlines and, and working towards those, again, you know, I figured that more important was to get the other stuff done and, and I could figure, I could work with you as the council to figure this stuff out, but it was more important to take care of other things versus.
You mean like the budget?
But, uh, yes, versus put a lot of time into this, so that's why.
Plus if it drags into January, when you gotta decrease, you would lose this budget.
That's right.
There's upside there to that.
Well, I feel like.
I have faith in you as a council.
I feel we just avoided a partial city shutdown.
Shutdown, yeah.
You don't have to go through that baloney.
Oh, yeah.
I'll get my wall in two thousand nineteen.
Item B, approve or deny Resolution two dash twenty nineteen, resolution designate an official city depository.
I'll introduce Resolution two dash twenty nineteen, uh, authorizing Arlington State Bank as our official depository.
Second. Second. Resolution 2-2019 is introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Cowell. That is a resolution designating the official city depository as Arlington State Bank. Any questions? Hearing none. Vote by roll call, Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Abstain.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
We had four in favor, none opposed, one abstention. Resolution passes. Item C, Resolution 3-2019, Resolution Authorizing Signature Authority for the City Accounts. I'll introduce Resolution 3-2019, Resolution Authorizing Signature Authority for City Accounts. And any of these now that do, I don't know, in mine, was yours, your name highlighted?
Yes.
Yeah, in, in the official one, it wouldn't have to be, the yellow will go away. Yep, okay. That was just highlighting a change from last year, so. Cowell? And is there a second? Did someone, did you, did you introduce it, didn't you? Yeah.
Second.
Did someone second? Okay. Okay, Resolution 3-2019, Introduced by Councilmember Cowell, seconded by Councilmember Hattelstedt, and that is a resolution authorizing signature authority for city accounts. Any further discussion? If not, vote by roll call, Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstedt.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution 4-2019, Resolution Designating Official City Newspaper.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 4-2019, a resolution designating the official newspaper as the Arlington Enterprise.
Second.
Motion, Resolution 4-2019, Introduced by Councilmember Highland, seconded by Councilmember Hattelstedt, and that is a resolution designating the official city newspaper as the Arlington Enterprise. Any further discussion? Hearing none, council, vote by roll call, Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Item E, Resolution 5-2019, A Resolution Approving the 2019 City Calendar.
I will introduce Resolution 5-2019, approving the 2019 city calendar.
And this calendar itself is a two-page detail, which followed the resolutions, so just states when meetings will occur, always subject to change, of course. Committee meetings, that type of thing, listing holidays. Second. Resolution 5-2019, Introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Cowell. That is a resolution approving the 2019 city calendar. Discussion? Hearing none. Vote by roll call, Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstedt.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 6-2019, A Resolution Approving the Extension of Arlington Sewer Access Connection Fee and Water Access Connection Fee Waiver Program for New Residential Construction Within the City of Arlington.
I will introduce Resolution 6-2019, a resolution approving the extension of the Arlington Sewer Access Connection Fee and Water Access Connection Fee Waiver Program for New Residential Construction Within Arlington.
Second.
Resolution 6-2019, Introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Highland. That is a resolution approving the extension of the Arlington Sewer Access Connection and Water Access Connection Fee Waiver Program for New Residential Construction Within Arlington. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vote by roll call, Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstedt.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution 7-2019, Resolution for State Aid for Local Transportation. Whoops. Read it off here. Resolution for State Aid for Local Transportation, Resolution Approving County Project Within Municipal Corporate Limits. Do you wanna just sort of expound on that?
Sure, this is the bridge project on Cassaw 17, over there by QuickTrip, that we've talked about. They have gone through the preliminary plans, and included in your packet was more of the details as to what they're planning for construction of that bridge. So, received this from Tim Becker at Sibley County, asking us to approve the resolution.
My understanding is that project is scheduled for 2020?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone wish to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce Resolution 7-2019, Resolution for State Aid for Local Transportation, Approving County Project Within Municipal Corporate Limits.
Second.
Resolution 7-2019, Introduced by Councilmember Cowell, seconded by Councilmember Hattelstedt, and that is a resolution for state and for local transportation, Resolution Approving County Project Within Municipal Corporate Limits. That is dealing with the bridge on County Road 17, near, near State Highway 5. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. Vote by roll call, Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Item H, which is Resolution 8-2019, and that is a resolution ratifying mayoral appointments and committees.
I'd like to move to approve the Resolution 8-2019, a resolution ratifying mayoral appointments and committees.
Second.
Resolution 8-2019, Introduced by Councilmember Yashewski, seconded by Councilmember Batchor. That is a resolution ratifying mayoral appointments and committees. Just a comment, you'll notice there are a few spots open. I could use anyone's assistance as far as possible individuals to, you know, fill those vacancies. There's one vacancy in the Cemetery Committee, and there is a vacancy on the Library Committee. So, if you can think of anyone, or contact anyone, ask them whether they would be willing to consider serving on, in those positions. It would be appreciated, it'd be nice to be able to fill those, fill those in at a future meeting.
Cemetery is quarterly and library is quarterly.
Library is monthly.
Quarterly.
No, quarterly, you're right, quarterly, yeah, quarterly. So, they're both quarterly, not a huge time commitment. Okay, any questions, comments on that? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Councilmember Hattelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed. Resolution is adopted. And lastly, Resolution 9-2019, Resolution Amending the 2019 Fee Schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 9-2019, a resolution amending the 2019 fee schedule.
Second.
Resolution 9-2019, Introduced by Councilmember Hattelstedt, seconded by Councilmember Batchor, and that is a resolution authorizing and approving the amendment to the City of Arlington 2019 fee schedule. And this amends Resolution 79-2018, which we dealt with, I believe, in December. And maybe you can explain what, what the change was there.
Basically, we, at, in December, when we completed the fee schedule, we had included only partial increases that were proposed by the Avant Energy Electrical Rate Study. So, you can see the residential electric base rate, as well as the commercial electric base rate, was increased back in December. What we did not do, but what was also included in the recommendations that we had, were to include the residential energy rate per kilowatt hour, and then also to look at the cost for small commercial and large commercial per kilowatt hour, as well as adding on an electric demand charge for those large commercial users. So, that's the full recommendation that came from Avant. Fortunately, we didn't have all that information in the previous fee schedule that was approved.
Okay. Any questions on that? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Okay, moving on to new business, approve or deny posting to hire full-time police officer, item 12.
We have the police chief here, so I'll let him speak to the agenda item.
Good evening, Chief.
Evening. Not sure how much detail you want me to get into. We've been looking at putting on an extra officer for assistance in covering weekend shifts and filling in vacations and holidays and any other time that we, sick time, have a officer that's missing. We've got some training that's coming up as well, and as tonight would be, a situation where we don't have anybody working, because Sarah's out of training for the two days. So, any questions?
Just, uh, what, uh, what time, timeframe, I guess?
So, the documents that we had put out, there was a few changes that we added to it. One of them, I was looking at a potential interview dates of February, was it the 3rd, 4th, 5th, 4th, 5th, 6th? And that was just very tentative.
4th, 5th, 6th.
Based on what the police committee's availability is gonna be, and the number of candidates that we would get. So, the, if we do get authorized to do the application process, I, I would like to leave it open until we have the position filled. So, if between, say tomorrow and the first week of February, we only get two applicants, I think we're gonna have to extend the hiring process.
I see, it, it does say we'll continue until the position is filled, so it isn't that it needs to be reposted, or?
I think we did that on the last one, didn't we?
Yes, yeah, and that seemed to work pretty well, yep.
Is there any substantial changes in the job description that goes with the application?
What I have added in there is the EMT requirement. So, within the first year, the preference would be that you are EMT certified prior to hire. And on the advertisement page, I had considered maybe doing a point system this time around, where we could give some points on our grading of the application process itself, based on job experience, military preference points, and then also if they already have a previous EMT licensure. And then, I think I say officer experience as well. So, one to three years, maybe give a point for each year that they get. So, if we can kind of evaluate the applications along those lines, and then move forward with the candidates that we get, the EMT process, as I'm just finishing myself, is a three-to-four month long process. So, the addition that I had placed in this description would be that they become an EMT certified within the first year of employment, if they're not already. So, hopefully that would open us up to closely evaluating every applicant and choosing one that's gonna fit the department best.
Okay, any other questions on the application process? Is there a motion to approve the posting?
I'll make a motion to approve the posting to hire a full-time police officer.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hattelstedt, seconded by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the posting to hire a full-time police officer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
We're playing some good candidates, like you found.
Item 13. Item 13, Approve or Deny the 2019 Membership in Minnesota Rural Water Association?
Councilmembers, I talked briefly with Lee Ortloff, with People Services, who strongly encourages that we renew our participation in the Minnesota Rural Water Association. I will talk at further length with Lee about the number of connections, but I believe that we are probably, his recommendation will be that we go with option A, an active membership, which is less than 306 meters or connections at $275. But I will verify that with Lee before I send this in, if you choose to go ahead and approve this evening.
What is the advantage of belonging to the association?
I believe in terms of consultation, working with the group, they help us out on a lot of our state mandates that we have to meet. They will sit down and work with us through some different processes and help us to manage that.
And is this, we've, we've been members of the Minnesota Rural Water Association for?
Correct.
For many years already, as far as you know?
As far as I know, yes, we have been members.
They kind of fire, fire up the people who aren't attendance, like the Winchester gentleman that spoke to us in Winthrop. You're pumped up after that, and that's kind of what they do at other events, like they go and attend and get training in certain areas, and they're very valuable.
I think they advocate for, for smaller communities such as ours, they have some lobbyists and do some different things, in addition to training, like Ben mentioned.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve membership for the Minnesota Rural Water Association.
Second.
Ooh, that was a tie. I'll try it again, one, two, three.
Whoever said second before me is fine. We don't need to.
No, we'll give it to the, to the new VP. Vice Mayor. All right, motion by Highland, seconded by Batchor, to approve the 2019 membership in the Minnesota Rural Water Association. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, motion carried. Item 14, Discuss Benefits of City Having One Refuge. Item fourteen, discuss benefits of city having one refuse hauler citywide.
Council members, this was brought up to me by a council member who had received a lot of public comments about it. In terms of trying to research what the city council has talked about in the past, I did talk with Vicki Pumpoon, who indicates that this has been discussed quite a bit in the past, and that, you know, residents really do have a strong preference for being able to choose, even if it is perhaps more costly. To allow them to have that individual choice seems to have been an issue. But you as a council can make a different decision than that, and if you wish, we could certainly look at trying something different in.
I guess, I sent Pat this, I had four or five residents talk to me about why we don't do this, and I said, I don't know why we don't. And I did a little digging around, and I know from one community to this community, I would cut my bill right in half. I'm talking fifty bucks every quarter. Now, that's it, of course, the bid process was the same, and they didn't change their process. But there is a considerable savings to be had in everybody's garbage pickup.
And I think.
Put it out on bids.
And if you look into, I've had actually one of these, one of the ones we use approach me about this too, but there's some advantage to the city too, I mean, you, because you're in charge of billing. You know, and they, there's a discount that they give to the city, and you make some, some extra money on that. You know, not a lot, but a little bit. So there is some advantage to that as well. And I know, I know one of the ones we use is definitely interested in doing this, if we are.
Plus, you wouldn't have had many, I would assume, less miles on the roads in town.
Well, and that was, that would be my thing, it would be the road traffic that we'd save or the.
Wear and tear on the streets.
Wear and tear on the streets.
I just don't know where we would lose on this. I, you know, five years ago, I would have said, nope, I want to pick my own. I don't want the city telling me where I'm going to send my garbage. Well, when you start sitting down and looking at it, I guess I'm fine with the city telling me. If the city can save on the streets and maybe make a couple bucks and cut the bill.
Of the residents?
Of the residents, they're going to pay less money. You know, there could be a circumstance, I don't know how they do this, if there's, let's say there's ten residents in Arlington that don't have garbage pickup, and I'm sure there are. I'm not sure in that contract, when it's citywide.
They have to take it.
They have to take it.
I think they have to take it.
They have to take it.
So we would be forcing maybe four, five, six, a very small percentage.
I bet there's bigger than four or five.
Okay, well, whatever, maybe it's ten, I don't know what the number is.
Yeah, that probably is the only downside that I could think of.
The only downside I can come up with.
So is it just residential, or is it commercial and residential? Commercial be on their same, they could do what they wanted to do? Or would that be included as a one hauler?
Or is that our decision?
That's what I'm asking.
I was, I considered this.
Or is it just residential only?
Only, I considered it, and it can be whatever we decide, of course.
Yeah.
My idea was residential.
Residential only.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know, maybe you start with residential, if it works, you get some feedback from the business owners, and go from there.
And I don't know, maybe, you know, how much commercial stuff there is, but maybe the, whichever company wouldn't be able to do all of it.
My concern, my concern is, we're hiring a new administrative assistant, and we're getting new jobs to keep her busy. If you, did you say it was up to the city to do the billing?
Oh, it's just included in the bill, I mean, there's a set rate for every, whatever you pick, it's just included in your bill, just like the water charge or any, any other charge. Yep, just goes out with the city bill.
Well, it would be sometime to get, it would be extra work to have that line item put on, but once it's put on.
Well, right.
Done, it's just updating it whenever, you know, probably yearly or something like that, be our, our contract. And I remember us talking about this probably about three years ago or four years ago, if I remember right, and at the time, we didn't do it. But we did get some bids from some companies, some, I think there was three that we had to look at. So I mean, it, it doesn't hurt to look. I know, I know there's people getting the same service, paying different amounts of money.
Oh, yes.
Go for the same service, so that would totally curb that too, which, you know, people just, you know, not taking the time to call their collector and getting the discounts that their neighbors get in.
And now, of course, depending on the size of the container too, the charge is different.
But I think you're stuck with your recycling on container size.
Yeah, that's.
The container size, I talked to four different residents that have waste management, and all four pay a different bill.
Right.
But they have the same size containers?
Yes, and all four pay a different one.
When I signed up for the service that was out of the store, and they gave me a price for the ninety-four gallon container, and, and it stayed. Because I tried to cancel and get a smaller one, just because I didn't need the big one. This is the why, you're paying less money for the ninety-four than you would for the.
They will all drop, if you call, I believe any one of the refuse collectors, and you call them, they will all drop. I call every other year, and get my bill dropped. And that was about eighteen dollars cheaper than anybody else I talked to, they'll drop it. And they'll drop it even more with the city contract.
Well, I know our neighbors to the west, Gaylord, and even further west, Winthrop, both have single pickup. And so that I would, I would highly recommend checking with them and see how it's working. It's obvious Gaylord goes with.
Gaylord Sanitation.
Gaylord Sanitation, a local company, and I don't know who Winthrop goes with.
I think Green Isle's with MediaCom, yeah.
So Green Isle has single?
Correct, waste management, I believe.
Yeah. Now, another thing we have to be concerned with, I know last time was discussed, is that some of these people are on contracts. I think probably waste management, but, so how easy it is for them to get out of the, we don't want, we don't want to have big uproar about penalties that are, have to be paid. If we give them enough of lead time.
I just signed a new contract with Waste Management, and that was when I, when they dropped my price last week. And before I did that, I asked them, if, let's say, the community I live in were to go to a citywide, you know.
Yeah, single hauler, yeah.
Am I stuck to that contract? And she said, by law, we cannot hold you to that.
Oh, really?
So nobody would be hung up by that. That came right from Waste Management.
I was just going to say that I, I have this recollection that the state law does allow cities to implement a change, and then gives people an auto.
Okay, that's good, that's good.
Say, we'd be free and clear there.
This has been a gradually developing area, and there have been a lot of struggles. Well, the waste haulers, you know, banding together to fight it, depending on who's oxes being gored, you know, and who has contracts where. And then again, a lot of citizens feeling that they, for whatever reason, they want the freedom of choosing their own waste hauler. But I think it's gradually moving in the direction of, of single haulers. I have the idea that St. Paul recently went to that, except I think there's a variation on that theme in some of the larger communities, where they don't have one waste hauler citywide, but they have districts.
Okay.
You know, where this waste hauler gets this district, this one gets that district. And you still have, you know, some more uniformity of collection and pricing, and less wear and tear on the streets. Otherwise, if you have several waste haulers, you know, you could theoretically have three different garbage trucks going up the same street the same day.
That's what it is now.
That's what it is right now.
But the same, within two days, they, all three of them cover the same streets.
Historically, we did have one, one waste hauler named.
Mark Kruski, yeah.
Then we had Duke Schmidt.
Duke, yeah.
And then he got bought out by somebody, but, you know, in the old days, that is how things went.
Sure.
But, yeah. The last time we went through this in a serious way, we did get a lot of backlash from the community, so for political reasons, the council backed off at that time. But it's certainly explored again.
I'd like to look, have, hopefully the council would support me in that, let's look at it, let's.
I, I would like to, yeah.
Take a serious look at it.
If we got so much feedback back that it was, you know, I just, I don't know, who wouldn't want to save money?
You know, that should be included in the advertising for.
The, the last time we talked about it, I know that it was certain people do not want specific companies because, for certain reasons. And, and the town was pretty much divided in half. So that's why, at that point, we didn't go ahead with it.
That's why we're here to make that decision.
That's right, yeah.
How's everyone feel, consensus?
Why am I quiet? Holy crap.
Yeah. Plus, you've got a wise crack, you aren't saying anything. Yeah, it doesn't hurt to look into it, I don't think.
Yeah, I can certainly contact, can't, contact Gaylord, Winthrop and Green Isle, ask them, you know, how things are going, pros and cons of, of working with a single contractor on that, bring that information back to the council for further consideration.
How often do they rebid it? In other words, move towards a program like this, and you have initial bids, one company gets it, then is it what, get it like two or three years, and then you rebid, or?
I'd imagine they might all be different.
Yeah, whatever you want, want to decide.
So I remember when we talked about it before, we, there was someone from Mankato that was talking about the perks of having the one hauler. And they were talking that when they went with them, you can like put anything in the contract that you want. So if we want a recycling thing up there every Saturday, that's built into the contract as well. If we want X, Y, or Z, that's built in. But it's a multi-year contract typically.
Well, maybe we can get some sample contracts from Gaylord or Winthrop or whatever, and start with that. All right.
I know Lee gives some material on this subject as well.
Moving on to unfinished business, approve or deny contractors' final payment requests for the twenty eighteen street and utility improvement project?
We received a final request. The total cost of the two thousand and eighteen street improvement project, which was basically an overlay on Second Avenue. That total was about a hundred and forty-one thousand. The amount that is currently outstanding on that is seven thousand and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. So everything has been completed satisfactorily. Jason Femrite, city engineer, has signed off on it, and I'm looking for approval from the council to go ahead and to make final payment to.
No. I'll make a motion to approve the final payment request for seventy thousand, seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for the completion of the twenty eighteen street and utility improvement project.
Second.
Motion by council member Batchor, second by council member Highland to approve the contractor's final pay request of seven thousand, seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for the completion of the twenty eighteen street and utility improvement project. And that request is coming from OMG Midwest, Inc., Doing Businesses Charred. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote no, motion carried. Item sixteen, approve or deny city waste collection contract to Renville Sibley Sanitation LLC. I believe we do have a copy of that.
Council members, provided at the table in front of you is a copy of the bid that we received from Renville Sibley Sanitation LLC, as well as Waste Management of Minnesota Incorporated. If you look at the proposal that was submitted by Waste Management, they actually quoted prices based on a monthly basis. So if you look on the right-hand side there, you'll see what those numbers are, broken down on a weekly basis. So comparing Renville Sibley Sanitation to Waste Management, you can see overall that Renville Sibley Sanitation is, overall, is lower than what Waste Management has quoted. We also have had Gaylord Sanitation provide us with bids in the past. They elected not to provide a quote for this time. I'm not sure why, but that was their decision.
I make a motion that we approve waste collection contract to Renville Sibley Sanitation.
Second.
Motion by council member Highland, second by council member Hattleston to approve the city waste collection contract to Renville Sibley Sanitation LLC. And again, this is covering city-owned properties, parks, fire hall, library, police department, Lion Center, Community Center, all of those sites. Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote no, motion carried. All right, at this time, we are going to recess for just a few minutes, and then we'll come back under enclosed, closed meeting for employee, employees' evaluation. So it is right now seven fifty-six, let's do eight o'clock, give you a three or four minutes to stretch a little bit. The, yes. We're good to go. We're good to go, okay. All right, this time I'll reconvene the regular open meeting at eight forty-five PM. And we'll move on to open discussion. Go ahead, if you want to say something about this afternoon's.
Sure, this afternoon, we met with a staff member from ESI Engineers. We basically went to Northland Drying, took a walk through their facility, looked at the dryer that they're using for their potato product, went outside, examined the ductwork that they have out there. ESI, in previous discussion with me, was pretty happy to see the amount of ductwork that's outside, because they believe that they can put muffling device into that relatively easily. So they did do a lot of noise measuring at this point, basically in proximity to where that exhaust is that's coming out of there. We then did take a look at some of the neighboring residential homes, basically those located to the east, as well as those located to the north. They did go ahead and put up, set up their noise testing equipment, which will be running today, tomorrow, and then a portion of Wednesday as well. And it'll be recording noise that they will then average out over a period of time to come to a decibel average for that area. In preliminary discussions today, talking with Andrew, he thought that the noise level is higher than what would be accepted, because there's a different setting for evening as compared to daytime. I think it's about fifty-five for evening hours. When the industrial property butts up against residential, the noise level has to be at the residential level at the border. So he felt that, you know, without having his measurements, he's going to go back and he'll have his measurement. So, he felt that, you know, without having his measurements, he's gonna go back and he'll have his measurements and he'll verify everything. He thought that maybe there does have to be some reduction in terms of the noise. Uh, how much that is, is, is yet to be determined, but there will have to be some adjustments made, which is my hope, will not just be reduced down to a level where it absolutely has to be, but will be, you know, something a little bit more so that it can be a little more tolerable for residents. We did take a look at the homes to the east, uh, their, their levels were in about the sixty, fifty-five to sixty, but then we did take a look at the home to the north and there the level was about sixty-five. So that's where the equipment will be located. I have asked the police department to kind of drive over in that area and just make sure that nobody's tampering with the equipment. It's locked, you know, secured to a tree and then uh, Millers have been kind enough to let us use their electricity for uh, operating the equipment, so.
Okay, any questions on that?
I certainly hope we can come to some sort of resolution on it. I've heard people that live beyond Sportsman's Park hear the, hear the, uh.
The humming?
Out the country quite a ways.
Yeah.
That's gotta be over two miles.
Pardon?
It goes a quite a way.
It's gotta be over two miles.
There's some days it's awful, awful loud.
Yeah.
Awful loud.
The, the one thing I will tell you, uh, uh, I asked how much the noise measuring device was that he was using. Thinking, well, maybe the city would wanna invest in it. Ten thousand.
I'd say now, ten thousand.
Yeah, probably not so much.
Ten thousand and it gets calibrated every year. You know, I think, you know, I was kinda comparing that to, I believe, what Northland Drying ha- has used to come up with their numbers.
They bought one. No.
Oh, did they buy one?
They, yeah, they had like a.
The little yellow one?
Yeah, the little yellow one that he had, but he, he misplaced the microphone piece to it or something, couldn't find that today.
Oh, okay.
So, but he did have a yell- little yellow one, probably nothing like the black one that, that uh, that company showed up with, but. No, I think that's um, that's a good starting point and I'm excited for two weeks from now when we can get that report back and start seeing some, something.
So if there are uh, some individuals who wanna participate, there will be, based on when we get that report, there'll be a meeting, we'll sit down with uh, uh, Northland Drying uh, staff and uh, we'll also have engineers from uh, ESI on the phone. We can ask them questions and have them better explain what those results mean and what we can do to try and mitigate some of the noise. The city has paid a hundred percent for this testing. And so, you know, my initial thought is that anything that needs to be done after this would fall upon Northland Drying to bring it down to the level that it needs to be to comply with the state statute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just one other thing under open discussion, we uh, um, city administrator Melvin and myself will be talking to a few attorneys in order to come up with someone to recommend as an alternate city attorney. So when we get into discussions about uh, land issues that, that our current city attorney is directly involved with, we would then use the alternate attorney to deal with that on the city's behalf. And we sat down and visited with Ross about that and he was very understanding about it. He said, that's the way to go, you know. Again, it's a perception of conf- uh, conflict of interest, it isn't, you know, and, and uh, so, so that's what we'll be doing here in the next few weeks is uh, trying to get together with someone that we feel comfortable with recommending to the council to uh, at least have them on standby when maybe the need would occur. And I don't know if you, do you have any, or have you all saw what the uh, bid came in on for the eight hundred megahertz? Yeah, good news there, about fifty thousand dollars less than what, what it was estimated at.
Who realizes that savings?
Well, that'll be split up, split up that same way.
Split according to that percentage.
Yeah.
So we're gonna save.
The grant, the grant will, will take fifty or twenty-five thousand of it, or the grant will be less by twenty-five thousand. And then uh, both the city and the county will, will have what, twelve-five? Yeah, less by twelve thousand five hundred, so.
Reasonable.
It's a good in that direction.
Maybe we should wait on this one too.
I think we need to do this one. I think this one needs to get done.
It's good that it come in.
Save the twelve-five and say, go.
Anything else?
And kinda where we're at with that, I believe, is that the county is going to take the lead.
It sounds that way. I mean, they certainly took the lead on the bidding, we knew nothing about it, which is, you know, whatever. But I think they're gonna take the, take the lead on the canceling, handling the financial part of it too and just build the city for what their share is and.
That's good.
So.
One more item, um, we did receive a letter from the MPCA. They are modifying our uh, chloride and our phosphorus limits through our uh, wastewater treatment facility. So I'm in the process of scheduling a meeting to have the MPCA come out and we'll probably have them with uh, uh, utility committee uh, sit down and we are able to go ahead and meet the phosphorus limits which are being lowered. However, the chloride limits, uh, we are going to be asking for a five-year extension. Uh, there really is no solution to the chloride, uh, there's nothing you can do with the salt. Basically, what some communities have done is they've actually, they soften the water before they send it out to residents. That way you don't have residents putting all their uh, saltwater into the uh, wastewater system. To do that would cost us, we quoted over a million dollars, so. That's not really viable for the city of Arlington unless the state's gonna chip in some significant money. So, we'll probably look at just getting that five-year extension and in hopes that somebody figures out a way to do it without having to soften it ourselves.
It's one big water softener.
Yeah.
Million dollar one. Would you like that for the wrestling salt?
Hey, they'd be making good money, right?
They would.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, what about this? Oh, you're gonna run through that? State auditor?
We received a letter from the uh, state auditor, um, regarding our Fire Relief Association and, and the pension uh, accounting wasn't done in accordance with GASB thirty-four or sixty?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight. I talked with Lisa about that, you know, I asked her, you know, what this was all about. She informed me that, you know, this was something that they realized and something that uh, Abdo Iken Myers was well aware of. We're now getting, you know, reprimanded for it, so now, going forward, we will figure out a way to address this. So I did send an email to Tom Olinger and Aaron, asking them, you know, is this something that we can correct for our two thousand eighteen audit? Is it something that they can do, or is it something that, you know, we need to hire somebody else to, to help us out with? So, as I get more of that information, I'll provide you with in a state, but don't be alarmed, uh, we got it, we're looking into it and we'll let you know what the next step is in that process. So.
Okay. Anything else?
One more thing. And you probably don't have the answer for it, but it's something I've been wanting to ask is, do we have any idea what the water usage is at the fairground since we put, spent all the money for the meter and the rerouting and all that stuff?
Oh, it'd be nice to know, huh? Yeah, cause everything is being metered now. Everything that goes in.
Should all be be, should all have been metered or is being metered and.
So that would just be simply looking at?
Bills.
At their bill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of those meters just took, they didn't get put in all that long, they weren't.
Well, they're in for the fair already though.
They weren't.
Oh, yeah.
It was March.
Yeah.
They got the full race season, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there was snow on the ground. Or April, March or April. Do you ever figure out who's gonna pay for what on the overage on the extra?
It is what it is.
Yeah, we are done.
It is what it is. If we got ripped a little, they got ripped a little, so be it. That's kinda the way I look at it.
Yeah.
They're gonna want money, I'm sure. But they could have requested just a long time to go through.
Uh, whatever hap- uh, two things. Whatever happened to the dispute on the uh, installation of that meter by the fairground entrance? Remember there was a?
The overage between people services.
People services.
And Jew, was it Jew?
Keedham, spend an extra five or eight thousand dollars.
I hope the city is out of the picture. I, I think it's, yeah.
We, you know, we went back and forth, uh, we went back and forth and uh, we paid a little bit more, you know.
Because of the fittings that had to be put in.
Yeah.
The lead fittings were taken out and, okay, we did pay that, yeah.
So we paid a little bit more.
But then as far as the balance that they were requesting, never heard a thing, okay.
Yeah, we're done with it.
What about the incident at the hospital where they were digging and uh, um, supposedly the lions, or Gopher State didn't mark the lions well, or something was?
Yeah. What happened, that was submitted to uh, uh, people services, uh, claims department and they denied it.
Okay.
So, we're done with it. I think it was Lidsaw excavating, who did the work on that.
So Lidsaw had a?
Was it marked?
Well, it was a situation where, yeah.
This is by the hospital now.
When they were digging, they claimed that there was no, it was not marked. It would have been people services who would have marked it.
Right.
By the time, you know, it was all dug up by the time that they claimed that it wasn't, so it was very difficult to prove that it wasn't. Uh, as a result, now people services does take a picture after they mark, so they've got a backup to show.
Yeah, go.
Hey, we did. This happened at a time when we were dealing with several challenges with a specific individual from people services. That individual is no longer there.
Right.
And basically they hit a water line, didn't they?
Correct.
Didn't they bust a water line?
Yeah, they hit a water line and then they had a hammer, whatever, I can't remember the terminology.
Oh, air hammer?
Yeah.
It's something about, air gets in the line.
Yeah, and.
Then we need to turn the pressure back on.
Oh, yeah.
Can, it can bust pipes, yeah. All right.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
Oh, Tom got that one.
DH boys. Motion by Highland, coun- council member Highland, second by council member Haddelstead to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Meeting adjourned at nine oh one.
That didn't take long.
Good morning.
Vietnam.
Yeah.
Happy New Year. Yeah.
You too.
You too.